Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the smooth opening of our school year and for the many great things that continue to happen in our school district. We pray that you continue to bless us with the support of our parents and this community as we work hard to make this a great year for teaching and learning. These things we ask in your name.
Amen. Mr. Egan, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
What they do is switch on.
(Inaudible) And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who did that?
Roll call, please, Ms. Fochette.
Ms. Acevedo is not with us. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Egan? He is here. Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. England?
Yes.
Ms. Dysart?
Here.
Mr. Long and Mr. Smith are not with us. Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you, Ms. Fochette. Before we go on to the regular items on the agenda, Mr. Cliff England has a point of privilege.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dysart. I just want to give thanks to the Sheriff's Department because they put up a digital portable school zone sign down at Davies and also at Miro on Parish Road. And I just want to thank them for doing that because right now we're waiting on State Department Transportation, which has been taking quite a few years now, you know, to try to get a school zone sign there. But I spoke with Ms. Fochette this afternoon and we're looking into it, you know, to try to get a portable one there. So, I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. England, and thanks to the Sheriff's Office for assisting us on this issue. We appreciate it. Okay, first item on the agenda or presentations, the communications update. Good evening, Ms. Inez.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. Get two for one. Yes. We are... Good evening. Good evening. It's good to be back with you all tonight and up here with Ms. Lexi Pritchard, who will be stepping in for me. As many of you all know, she's done already such a phenomenal job. She's going to help me talk a little bit about the websites as I kind of finish that work over this summer, and we are very excited about this new template. So you know, about six years ago, we transitioned to working with Blackboard for our websites. And over the last, I would say, four or five months, I've been really working to make this transition over the summer to this new template. So as I told our communications and our teachers this summer, you know, the content, what is there is really the same. It's the look was updated. And so there are a few things that I'm going to point out. And when we are finished, please feel free to ask questions. I'm just going to point out a few features that are high level, but if there are things of particular interest, please let me know. So the first thing that we really wanted to highlight was that this website template is the same for the district as it is all of our 12 schools. And the thing that we all loved about it the most was that it was more interactive and user-friendly. And so if you see at the very top, you have all of our channel bars. And I'm going to go into the school board channel here in a second. That's the additional channel that we added for this new template, and I'll talk about that, like I said, in a moment. The rest of those channels are the same as they were in our previous template. But if you scroll down, Lexi, below the video icon, yep, thank you, you will see the icons. And so this was really to help all of our families be able to navigate some of our big items that we felt like we were getting a lot of calls about or that we wanted to bring a special attention to. This was anything from Clever Login, which is probably one of our most used portals on our website, to being able to find information about employment, to MoMA Center and cultural arts, bus routes, those types of things. So all of those are right there. And the other feature that we really loved about this is the video component. So, you know, the work that Barry and Jack do on a daily basis could really be featured. And we felt like this was a much more interactive way, highlight the work that Penn TV is doing, be able to give a snapshot of what it feels like to be in our schools very quickly. And we are one of the first districts to really be using this feature with Blackboard. So we were excited about that. As I had mentioned, more streamlined to ensure accuracy and alignment of district-wide information. So if you are interested in finding information about another school, you can hit the "Select a School" dropdown. And if we just go to Airby Elementary, you'll see that the templates all look the same. You have a really quick catchy statement about the school itself pulled from their mission and vision statements. And below that, their icons are slightly different based on what is necessary or what parents are looking for at a school level versus the district level, but all of that information is right there. And if you scroll up from me and Lexi and go to the "I want to find" dropdown right next to "Select a School", this was some of the information that our schools told us they get the most phone calls about. So we wanted to be sure that this was really easy, pulled out for parents. We can change this throughout the year, obviously, over the summer and at the beginning of the school year, back-to-school information, bell schedules, things of the school supply lists were of importance. And so we put that center stage for this new website. The other people who... Oh, thank you. Yes. And so we also wanted to just point out, this was true on our previous website, and we really utilize this feature quite a bit, but the translation feature of the website. So this is how we are really able to communicate a lot of our information to our families who are more comfortable reading in a different language. And so you'll see the vast majority of the information on the site itself will be translated into the language. We do work with our students and our families on the school campus to be able to show this feature so that if they're looking for information, they're able to see that. For example, you can find our guide to student conduct. This is how it's translated and other documents of that nature. Great. The other thing I wanted to point out is, under the school board feature, through a lot of work that Shelby was able to do and now Angie is picking up, we were able to get board docs up and going. So if you click "Board Meetings", you'll see tonight's meeting, and all of that information is there for our community members. And then if you click the meetings right next to "featured", you can see our previous ones as well. If we go back, I'm going to show you "Board Policies", and right under "School Board", our board policies are there as well. Again, we work with CAPS, with For Thought Consulting on this. And you can find, if you hit "Enter CAPS" in the center of this page, all of our policies, which we'll be talking about a little bit later this evening. So I did want to just point that out for you all as well. And then the final thing, you know, so many of our parents utilize our website on their phones. And one of the things that we had heard from parents and from our school people was that the user-friendly, you know, it wasn't as user-friendly on the phone as it was on a desktop. And so one of the things we loved about this template was how user-friendly and how great it looked on a cellphone. So if you ever do have a chance to pull up the website on your phone, you'll see all of these features are really still there. The icons look really easy to navigate, and parents are able to find all of that information quite quickly. So that's a very high-level overview of the website. And I know that there might be some questions or some things in particular that you are hoping to see, so I was just going to open it up for questions, if that's all right, Ms. Dysart.
Yes, thank you so much for that beautiful presentation. You said the magic word in technology, user-friendly. That's awesome. And it looks very, you know, user-friendly and clear-cut. And you have made, y'all have made many additional beautiful additions and so much more information. So we thank you for everyone involved to help include all the additional icons and additional information for our community and for our parents and teachers. So thank y'all very much. Great job. Great job. Okay, any questions from anybody? Or Mr. Warner?
Maybe there's a glare on this side, but is that the directories on the other side? Is that what I've seen? Is there a directory where a parent needs to email a teacher?
So what's going to happen for all of that information? If you go to a school?
Okay.
And you go to the very top, you see teachers. They'll be able to find their exact teacher, and you can pick, let's do the one, yep. They'll see the picture, they'll see the email address. And many of the teachers have included information about when their planning is. We did move over to school status this upcoming August, I guess in a week and a half. My eldest will be at Lacoste, and I received my first school status text message as a mom. I was like, oh my goodness! But that feature that Ms. Lametta and the technology team really has been so fabulous as far as being able to directly contact parents and then parents being able to directly contact their teachers. So we'd really advise they look at their school status information, and then it's also here as well.
And is it like, when you pull them up, it has like the syllabus and kind of their lesson plan?
So it did previously. We have all of that information, and Ms. Lametta could probably talk about that a little bit more, is on their LMS pages. And so that, the students know how to get to LMS, they know where that is, but their assignments and all of that is posted on that feature. And so they can find Clever is actually where they're going to go to log in, and then their whole, you know, just like a college campus, if you were taking online courses, you would go to the campus and they would get all of their coursework there. Now, our elementary, and they haven't started it yet in most schools, will be posting their newsletters to families, just like their overall newsletters. But the rest of the assignments are typically posted on LMS.
So there's no excuse that they didn't know what their homework assignment was.
There is no excuse.
Post it right on a webpage. All you have to do, and here's your Chromebook, so you can go find it, right?
And I don't want to step on any toes, but with last year and so many of our students navigating, you know, hybrid and virtual, that was really what we had heard as being a huge highlight of that or a silver lining was the fact that the students became so comfortable and our teachers became so comfortable navigating the LMS pages.
Well, thank y'all very much. This is really nice. This is really user-friendly. Keyword here. Very functional.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions, comments? Ms. Fochette?
I just want to thank Alex. I mean, she worked very, very hard on this website and the conversion, and she was having her baby and working on it simultaneously, I think, and getting it all together. I know she's handing off a lot of that to Lexi, but she did an incredible amount of work on this and interaction with representatives at the school site. So I just want her to know how much we appreciate her efforts, and Lexi is just stepping right in and continuing it. So it's been a really, really good process over the last couple of months.
Thank you so much.
Great job. Thank you. Thank you, ladies, again. We appreciate all your efforts and hard work. Okay, next item is an Education Committee item. Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you, Ms. Dysart. Agenda item number three is an update on education initiatives, and we have Ms. Lametta.
Hi, good evening.
And while Ms. Lametta is up there, maybe she can continue and comment on the question that Mr. Warner was talking about, about the Clever Login and the LMS and how that operates.
Well, as luck would have it, that's my first item on my list.
On your list.
Learning management system. So just to kind of frame this a little bit, I was going to give you an update tonight on our education initiatives and explain to you that many of these we were able to purchase with the COVID relief funds or the American Rescue Plan funds. So we were able to purchase a lot of these things without it being a burden on the general fund. So I did want to start with that. And as you see on your list of items we purchased right out the gate is learning management system. And that is what Ms. Snyder was speaking about, where it's like Blackboard or Moodle or Canvas that you may have in a college setting where the entire, what the students have to do is on the website. A little different from Google Classroom is the organization of it. Google Classroom is a wonderful tool to help teachers teach with, but the organization of LMS is very nice for parents and students to know what they have to do, when they have to do it. Videos are linked, the homework's linked, and it's really an all-encompassing place that parents can see what students need to do. And as she said, the students have their login. And we did switch, as we talked a couple of weeks ago, from E-School to J-Campus. And the login was their E-School ID last year, so it's going to be their J-Campus ID this year, just for parents. If they try to log on to Clever, we did change the student's ID number. So that will be, they can get that from the teachers and we'll get that out to them. So the learning management system is an all-one-stop place to get everything they need as opposed to teachers having to do a lesson plan, create the work, teach the work, and then go post things on the website. We look at the LMS as the teacher lesson plan. And as the district, we are able to take the district curriculum from the district curriculum coordinators, push it out to the teachers so they don't have to take what we've done, reinvent the wheel to teach it. They can jump off the page we have, they can enrich it for students, they can add scaffolds if they need to for their classes, make it their own based on the students they teach. And then really, it's a nice way to have a standardized lesson for students across the board, no matter which teachers they happen to have and which grade level at which school. It's almost like the McDonald's approach, where you're going to get the same thing no matter where you go. So it's a nice way to make sure everyone gets what they need to get to address the standards. But it's also a one-stop shop for parents, and the teachers don't have to do it in three different places. So it's a time saver for the teachers. And they can just spend their time honing the craft of teaching as opposed to getting information in three different places. So it really has been a relief. The teachers jumped on board with it. They loved it when we first bought it. And as Ms. Snyder said, COVID forced everyone to jump on full force. And once they did, it really has been a time saver. And with the Chromebooks, high school in particular, teachers have said, you know, it was a learning curve to do it. When the students walk in, they open the Chromebook, everything's set up. They know what the lesson starter is, the lesson, they can just jump in. It's become much more efficient in the classroom without teachers having to switch things on the board each period. So it's really been a nice feature for the teachers, and it's good for the parents as well. So in addition to that, we were able to get some learning online virtual software for the CTE students, simulations of woodcutting and different things that they can do online, as well as in-class experiences. We were able to add software and to help us monitor online activity to keep the students safe while they're all online now, the majority of their day. It's important that we make sure they're safe. And what the last item is what she spoke about also, school status, where it's actually a communication tool, where teachers can have the app on their phone, their class roster shows up, they can email, text, or call parents individually from the phone, and teacher's cellphone number is not shown out to anyone. It's a number they get, the parents can save it and know that's from the teacher. Also, teachers can do a blast, we call it, which is they can send the same message to everyone in a class or a period to say, "Test tomorrow", or "Don't forget, test on Friday. Don't forget, guided notes went home today. Study those for Friday." So it's a nice way for parents to not have to go look on a website, but they're going to get the information straight from the teacher. And we've really, the teachers have said, the communication level with parents has really increased. And we started last year for the first year, and this year they were telling us they want, "Is the school status ready? Is school status ready?" They were dying to get it rolling again for the parents. So it's really been a nice way to engage the parents and give them what they need without them having to go and figure out which teacher teaches which student, you know, that comes right to them on their phone. So...
So you're saying there's a silver cloud, a silver lining?
Yes, and I say, yes, we've had... It's almost like Hurricane Katrina, where we had to find the silver lining and how we were able to put some things in the hands of students. It's similar that we were able, if people had to jump in, learn the technology, students had to jump in and were able to get these, you know, devices. We were able to get the software, things that would have taken us quite a while to build up over time, buying with the general fund. So that is a silver lining. And it's pushing the students forward and that technology aids, like Ms. Dysart said, it's user-friendly, and it's pushing them into using technology to learn.
How many Chromebooks does the school system own now?
You tested my memory. I'm not exactly sure, a number, but we have, at each school, we have class sets of the Chromebooks for the students as they move, you know, class to class.
We have more than a one-to-one. So we've got about 7,600 kids.
Yes.
We are in excess of that with Chromebooks. Because if you take, for example, I don't know, say, well, before we checked them out to the high school kids, without checking it out for them to carry it within every period, you had the teachers in the core areas having a mobile lab full of them. So they, we had duplicated amounts. So we had more at each school than we actually had children. So we are definitely at a greater than one-to-one. So if you ask me how many, somewhere between eight to 10,000 out there. And you ask our technicians, they'll tell you it's more like 25,000 that they have to go through and service all of them.
Right. Right.
But it's a tremendous number.
That's a chore just to keep, just to keep track of that, that's a chore, to make sure that they're all maintained and running well and have the proper software on them. And lord, wow.
Right. And we have three technicians that do this, only three. So we're looking at that because it's... Talk a little bit about the school status, the safety issues, and how things are recorded and that type of thing. Because I know that many people talk about when we have communications with teachers and students and parents, how that operates through school status in terms of safety.
Sure. What school status is nice for is when parents, teachers used to call home. To parents, they would do a log, they would write down, they'd call their mom at this day and this time and have a written log. What school status will do, as soon as that phone call is made, it records, date, time, the teacher. Another thing that he's going to spend time doing, they don't have to spend time in elementary making a communications folder and writing down who they spoke to, when, and what time. It'll all get recorded. We can easily print out per student which calls went out, which blast went out, texts, emails, everything. So we have a record for the parent and/or teacher, you know, what communication went out. And it gives us a record too, to make sure the communication is going out safely to the parents. In high school, we have for virtual, the teachers did request, could they communicate directly to the students? So with parent permission, teachers did use, a handful of teachers used to communicate with the high school students on virtual because often they were, you know, 18 years old, 17, 18, and the parents said, yes, you know, if you can just let them know what the assignments are, it's a help for me not to have to, you know, relay the information to them. So, but it's all recorded, and we have a record of everything that was said or done. So it's just a really nice feature to make sure everything's happening in a safe way. So that's been a tremendous benefit.
So for example, even with some of the communications that would go out to a club at the high school, what we're working at is, instead of a teacher having to do it to try to figure out a way to communicate with the students on their own, they can go ahead, we can set them up with their club or their ball team or whatever, and that teacher or coach can send out a communication to the entire group. And in this, through school status, we have a copy of the text, so we can see what's being sent out. So those safety features are in there for both the children, the parents, and the teachers.
Yeah, so those have been tremendous assets to us. And as I said, the teachers have said and the parents have commented how much more communication there is now thanks to that easy tool, you know, school status. So it's really been a wonderful, wonderful tool for us. Once we got through the virtual and the online things we purchased, we were able to purchase grades three through eight, Amplify Science this year, all at once. Instead of phasing it in a grade level at a time, we were able to get the online, the digital, and get everything we needed for the students, the lab materials. We were able to get the online component. Students can do virtual notebooks. We were able to do summer training for administrators, teacher leaders, the coaches. And we also have presenters to training for the teachers in August. So we were able to get the all-encompassing package, everything we needed all at once without it being a burden on the general fund. We were able to do that with the COVID relief funds. Additionally, on the bottom half of this, bottom part of this page, we're pushing forward with Louisiana Department of Initiative of Fast Forward Program. And they're basically trying to help us provide more opportunities in high school for students to earn college credit. We were on that road. We had so many students taking the AP courses, getting credits through AP exams. We've always had a robust dual enrollment program, but we've worked closely with Dr. Tina Tenney at L.A. P. Nunez with our partnership there. And we're increasing the number of dual enrollment credits that students will have the opportunity to earn throughout their time at Shell Med High. On your second page, we have a couple of elementary initiatives. We do have the Accelerate Intervention Tutoring Sessions that we're putting in, and that's actually grades K to five. Grades K to five, it's in English, Language Arts, and Math. And what this is, is we're using retired teachers and some college students, two days a week, 30 minutes each of those days during the intervention time that's already built into the class day. And it's a nice way to let the students continue to learn their new material, but bring in 30 minutes of intervention to help any learning loss or target any individual needs the students might have. So we do have that. We're also adding a pre-teaching component because it's a great way for students to see ahead what the reading text might be, go over it with the tutor, get confident with it. So when they do go into the class, they feel confident participating and feel confident digging deeper into the text, finding evidence, finding strong evidence, writing strong arguments if they're comfortable with the text. So this is something we have in grades K to five at all the elementary schools. And finally, the last piece, which is not for the COVID relief funds, but there was a real-time early literacy grant the district wrote for. We did get that funded, and that's actually grades K to three. And that's actually after-school tutoring on a virtual platform. So we do have some of our own elementary teachers who reach out virtually and give students some literacy training. And the literacy training is meant to complement our curriculum and extend what they're doing in the school day, but it will also help address any learning loss they may have had from literacy or any reading lessons that they may have needed some help with. So that's after-school virtually in grades K to three. And the intervention tutoring during the day is K to five at all of our schools. So these are just some things we have new, and I wanted to recap some of the online virtual things we were able to purchase thanks to the COVID funds and just kind of give you an overview of where we're headed for the school year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lametta, for that very comprehensive presentation. And, you know, as we can see, there's lots of very innovative technology that's being incorporated and also really great, you know, face-to-face interventions as well. So thank you for your hard work and all of the hard work of the teachers that are implementing these initiatives. Do we have any questions from the board?
I just...
Mr. Warner?
I'm just, I'm just really proud of this administration and teachers and, you know, the way we efficiently use our funds. And I read in the paper where, you know, we did drop, but we had the least drop in our school, in our grades compared to other school districts across the state. And that really, you know, some of the bigger systems too, we did, we hung in there. We were the best one. I think we had the lowest drop across the state. And considering the challenges that we had last year and these programs that you initiated and the administration initiated and our teachers, like Ms. Lemoine said, I'm just very proud of our system and what we've done over this past year and the way we've used our COVID relief funds to, you know, put the best product out there that we could possibly put for our students. So I'm just very proud of this administration and the administration and start with you, Ms. Lametta, and going down from there to everyone. It's been, it's a great job.
I just say, like Ms. Lemoine said, every one of the initiatives requires the teachers to learn something new, jump in with both feet, take off with it. And I always try to mention that it's with their hard work that we're able to implement any of these things. Because we can have an idea and a program, but without teachers jumping in, putting everything it takes to make it work for the students and really make it meet the needs of their students, we couldn't get the results that you're mentioning. So there was learning loss with every district due to students being out on virtual, but the teachers did everything they could to minimize that as much as possible.
Yeah. Part of a great organization is the leadership, getting the individuals underneath them to buy in. So you guys are doing a great job with the buy-in. And I just want to congratulate you guys on that. Great job, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any other questions from board members or comments? Ms. Dysart?
I just had a question, ditto to everything that Mr. Warner and Ms. Lemoine said. All of these programs are just, they look wonderful, and it's so great for the individual students. But I have a question about the school intervention time. How were the students selected for that as far as the retired teachers and the college students helping on that? On to the Accelerate?
Sure.
Accelerate and Intervention Tutoring Session? That's during the daytime?
Yes, it's during that 30-minute intervention time that the school already sets aside. Every student gets the intervention time. And we look at multiple things from DIBL's test scores, reading test scores, benchmarks, multiple data points for students to see what the needs are.
And so is that an individualized, per-student kind of thing? Or the whole class would do the intervention at one time? Logistically, if you could explain that?
Logistically, in an intervention time in elementary, the elementary teacher in the classroom provides interventions for the students in the room. So this would be where a college student or the retired... where a college student or the retired teacher would have a select group of students that they would provide intervention to during the intervention time while the teachers do the intervention with the other students. That way, these students are not losing any other class time, they're not missing any new work. It's either helping them with learning loss or really trying to pre-teach them and get them comfortable because the best thing to do is get the student comfortable on the front end of the instruction and not make them feel like they need a remediation on the back end. If they can feel success when they're met with that curriculum and met with that text with their, with their other students in their classrooms, so much of that motivation helps them know they can move forward with it.
That's great. Thank you. A lot of confidence building as far as their skills go.
Because they can do it. With a little bit more help, they can do it. And we just want them to know they can.
Wonderful programs. Thank you.
Ms. Daisart?
I just wanted to comment on and follow up with what Mr. Warner was saying. The preliminary scores that came out from last year, and of course, we don't have school performance scores, district or anything like that. The preliminary scores that came out only showed for St. Bernard Parish, a two-point drop, two percentage point drop in those students attaining mastery or above. And that's the lowest drop of any school system in the entire metro area and mostly throughout the state. So we do have to give our teachers an incredible amount of credit for what happened last year.
Yeah.
As you were stating, Mr. Warner, teaching every day in person, dealing with children who were quarantined, who were close contacts, operating simultaneously an entire virtual school and trying to support some of those students. Now, we did learn though, virtual, throughout the state, there was a 15% difference in students who were in person versus virtual in their test scores. That kids who were participating in virtual programs throughout the state scored 15% lower than kids who were either in a hybrid or totally in-person setting. And that just reinforced, and especially for the younger ones, it reinforced our basic belief that the younger the child, the more they need to be in school on a day-by-day basis, not doing the virtual learning unless they have a tremendously supportive structure in the home and almost a parent or an adult who's going to go teach and be with them every step of the way. Now, the older a child gets, maybe it's more appropriate at times or it could be at a high school level, depending upon the circumstance of the child and what he or she is studying. But there's no substitute for in-person learning, especially for the younger kids. So again, our teachers did an incredible job with that. And just as we talked a little bit about our conversion with the website and talked about Alex and Lexi, without Mary Lametta here, in terms of the conversions that we have been undergoing to online platforms and the major conversion from eSchool to J Campus and the institution of all of these things virtually, I don't know where we would be. She has done an incredible job managing it, organizing it, setting up the training sessions and being there day to day. So, I mean, I know she's standing there behind masks, probably getting a little red, but I do want to say how, what an incredible asset she is to the school system. And I don't know what we would do without Mary, aside from the, all the pretty stuff that she gives us and
Yeah, yeah.
but the real work of making learning happen, happen each and every day in this age of technology and especially on these virtual platforms. I mean, she's just done an incredible job leading that particular effort.
And we have a wonderful team that, you know, powerful team that stands with me too. So that goes a long way. I appreciate it though, Ms. Boche. Thank you.
But the difference, I just wanted to mention that you mentioned virtual versus classroom and the 15% difference. And it shows that classroom size makes a difference. When you have less students in that class, some of them are virtual, some of them are in a class. When you're dealing with less number of students in that class, you're more effective also. So being able to keep them classroom sizes down is important as well.
That's why we need more young people going into the teaching profession, talented young people in our teaching profession and majoring in the areas of the maths and sciences and special education where we need more good, good educators, especially in those areas.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Lametta?
Again, on behalf of the board, thank you so much for all of your hard work and thanks to all the teachers for being heroes in our classrooms. Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, agenda item number four is personnel. And so I will toss it back to Ms. Daisart.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoyne. And since Mr. Long is not here with us tonight, Mr. England, would you chair this?
Yeah.
Item, please.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Ms. Daisart. Personal items review of personnel changes for August 2021. Ms. Boche?
We just have some, you know, movement and some appointments of people. We are, I think, doing well as far as staffing goes in all of our main areas. We're fully staffed. We have a couple of maybe inclusion people that we would need at a couple of different levels. But other than that, we're doing okay.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Boche. And at this time, I'd like to say that all the teachers came back to work and we had that virtual
Virtual opening.
Opening. And that was fantastic. And they did a great job.
They did a real good job with that.
Yeah, they did. And so we want to thank them for that and for the administration. Any questions from Ms. Boche? Because this is just for information purposes only. Okay. Now, we'll move on to the next one. It's a finance, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. England. Item number five, finance, adopt 2021 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. Mr. Fernandez, this is an annual questionnaire that we have to fill out for our audit purposes, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
You did my presentation well. Thank you very much. No, that, yes, as Mr. Warner said, we adopt this every year in conjunction with our audit, which will be taking place in the month of September. So it just gives various pieces of information about the school system and its operations. So we ask you to adopt it so we can present it to our auditors when they report next month to support our audit.
Any questions from board members? All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move this to the full board.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoyne. Seconded by Ms. Jackson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, we can vote on machine. I'm sorry. I'm going back the old way. Please vote your machine.
Motion passes nine zero.
All right. Thank you, Mr. England. We'll go back to Mrs. Daisart on item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Next item is also an executive committee item. And Mr. England, I'll ask you to chair this, please.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart. Item number six dash one, consideration of adopting a revision of school board policy JD. Today, tonight, we have Ms. Alex Snyder with us.
Good evening. I'm back again. So we're going to look at six different policy changes. I know we're going to take these individually. They all are in response to the revisions of the Louisiana Revised Statute 416 via House Bill 411, which is the disciplinary statute. You'll find that at the very end, we've given you a copy of 411 with the markups of those changes that were made. And so we'll go one by one. But overall, the changes to the revisions of Louisiana House Bill 411 really came down to a few different things. One was an increased significance on the Student Handbooks and our Guide to Student Conduct. The second was just language changes, pupil to student, legal guardian was cleaned up. So there was some language changes there. Progressive discipline was also something highly stressed in these changes and attention on discipline with students who have special needs, IEPs, BIPs or 504s. And then the law also outlines how parents are to work with, or schools are to work with our parents. So those were the overall major changes and we'll now take them one by one.
Okay.
So the first one, JD Discipline, you'll see that you have the revised version marked as 6.1. So you'll see the markups, blue is obviously the additional components, red is removed out for that. And then behind that, marked by the green piece of paper, you'll see that, the completely clean version of that. So the major changes here were things that really are already in our Guide to Student Conduct. As mentioned, there's an additional focus on evidence-based interventions and supports for students as well as the progressive nature to which we deal with student behavior. Minor infractions are handled with minor consequences or discipline, and those things grow in severity as the student behavior changes as well. I've given you a quick summary of that so that you guys don't need me to reread all of it, but you'll see the highlights on that page in the beginning.
Okay. Any questions for on 6.1? Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I'll just make a motion to adopt the revision of school board policy JD.
Yeah, JD.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Lamoyne. Further questions? Ms. Daisart?
Just quickly, so all of these revisions are based strictly on the state law that has just passed, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. It's more verbiage than anything.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
And for the information for the board members, you know, we have to next couple of weeks, you know, to look over all this stuff before we take a final vote on at the full board meeting. Okay? Move on to 6.2, consideration of adopting
We're voting for a vote.
I'm sorry, let's take a vote then. So we have first and second. So please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we can move on to 6.2, consideration of adopting revision of school board policy JCD. Ms. Snyder?
So JCD is our policy referring to our student guide of conduct. As mentioned, the law puts an additional emphasis on progressive levels of minor through major infractions and identifies corresponding minor through major interventions and consequences. This is actually how our guide to student conduct is already set up. Mr. Powell and his team have really worked hard on that. So that's already really in there. It also reserves the right, or it really outlines that the alternative school is reserved for major infractions, which is how our discipline system is already set up in St. Bernard Parish.
Any questions?
I'll move that we send this new policy or revised policy, revised policy JCD to the full board with recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart. We have a motion. Seconded by Ms. White. Further questions? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, 6.3, consideration of adopting revision of school board policy JCDAB. Ms. Snyder?
This policy really is a language cleanup. It also, the only addition to this policy is that the law requires that any student who is being disciplined for use of drugs be referred to counseling or to see a professional.
Any questions? Make them, Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt revision of school policy JCDAB.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warner. We have a motion. Seconded by Mr. Campbell. Further questions? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
6.4, consideration of adopting revision of school board policy JCDAC. Ms. Snyder?
JCDAC, the dangerous weapons policy reflects the new statutory changes that outline the definition for dangerous weapons.
Question. Yeah, that list goes on, Ms. Daisart. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we consider adopting the revision of school board policy JCDAC.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. White, seconded by
I'll second.
Ms. Lamoyne. Further questions? This is one, this is one policy that we've really got to be very careful with. I can see that. Thank you. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Consideration of adopting revision of school board policy JDD. Snyder?
So the changes to policy JDD, you'll see there are several things that are really changed within this policy. A few things just to note, the first is notice to parent or legal guardian is now allowed by electronic communications. That's something that, you know, we have been really excited about. It's easier to contact many of our parents through those devices and with safe school, or school status. That's been a definite bonus. The other thing I'll just highlight here is the appeals allowed for students who were recommended for placement at the alternative school, but subsequently had the recommendation reduced to suspension now includes the qualification that the parent or legal guardian of the student has 10 days to appeal the ruling to the school board or to the district court. That's been changed. The mandatory suspension for the length of the knife being from two to two and a half inches has been a change in this. And then allowing students to receive full credit for the work if they are suspended versus partial or full credit is a change to this policy.
Questions from Ms. Snyder on this policy change? So it's just a minor change on that one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just a quick question. That the legal guardian would be notified by electronic communication or a certified letter? That just, it seems as though if we do it just by electronic communication, some parents may miss that, you know, may not check their emails every day or, you know, I know this is following state law, but, you know, for those who may not even have a computer to receive that. So does that mean we're going to completely exclude the certified letter? It says or, not and. Ms. Boche?
This, this is dealing with a suspension, not necessarily a placement at Raleigh. What happens if the parent, first they try, if you notice, to call them on the phone. They can't get a parent on the phone. Then they'll try electronically email. They can send a certified letter, but a certified letter usually takes several days to arrive and the person has to be there to accept it and sign off on it. So the faster means of communication is telephone. And now we're able to also try to email, put it in through school status that most parents check. And that's why it's extremely important. We try very hard not only to get accurate telephone numbers because people change phone numbers quite a lot and sometimes don't notify us of such. So accurate phone numbers. And we're also trying very, very hard to get accurate email addresses for the legal guardians of all of our students so that they, we can instantly communicate with them. And really, those are the fastest ways of communication. But we will, if we can't get them any other way, we will send a letter. So we do expect a response because usually they have to come in and sign or either in person or through DocuSign or something, sign the suspension letter. So we're constantly trying to get them in. This just gives us another way legally to try to do it as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackson?
I just have a comment. I note on the first page where, in the blue section where it says a student who is suspended for longer than 10, should there be like days or some timeframe?
You're absolutely right. It's probably a typo.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but I just
Thank you.
I just wanted to point it out. 10 hours.
10 minutes.
10 seconds. No. Thank you. That, we do need to take a look at that.
That's why I said before, we have two weeks to look at all this stuff. Mr. Warner?
Do we need a motion on the revision of school? I'll make the motion on the revision of school board policy JDE?
JDD.
JDD.
I'm sorry, JDD. I'm trying to get ahead of myself.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warner. Seconded by Ms. White. Further questions? Further questions? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay. 6.6, consideration of adopting some revision of school board policy J D E. Ms. Snyder?
J D E is placement at our alternative school. There are quite a few changes to this policy, but it really boils down to changes in the notification and communication of our school and the district level administrative staff with our parents. And so those things have changed. It also addresses the notification of the hearing as well as the appeal process.
And what we, what Ms. Snyder has provided for you behind this, and if you want to take this home and go through it more thoroughly, you have House Bill 411, which is right behind it, which really has basically the entire discipline statute, revised statute for the state of Louisiana that deals with a lot of it. And as you can see, everything underlined in that statute, something new that the legislature put in, whether it's cleanup of a language or a clarification. And as a result of that, then our policy needs to be changed similarly. And with our consultants, they've come and recommended these changes. Now, the statute deals with expulsion. We treat that as a placement in our alternative school. So if you do have time and you want to go through it, you can take this policy and you can also read the statute itself. And I think you're going to find when you read the statute itself, it's somewhat convoluted, because that thing has been amended, revised, modified, so much over the years. Sometimes you almost see contradictory passages. Makes a great opportunity for attorneys to argue certain points.
Oh, yeah.
Because in one section, it may say this, in another section, it says something a little bit slightly different. And we've done the best we can with our consultants to get the policy as clean as we can get it. But it, the policy is totally based off of this revised statute on discipline that our legislature deals with each session.
Okay. Mr. Warner?
Ms. Bocey, did we know the vote? How it passed? Just out of curiosity, yeah, on House Bill number 411. How'd it pass?
It, it passed overwhelming majority, but it gets amended, and this one changes this and this. And then they put a committee together, and we thought there was going to be a total revision to the statute. Didn't quite happen this year, because there's so much, so many differing opinions about how we should approach this, depending upon how you feel about school discipline. So a lot of this is a compromised situation. Now, it's very clear and explicit when you have situations, and heaven forbid, you know, drugs, alcohol, you know, kind of weapon, that kind of thing is extremely clear on what the outcomes of those need to be. The intent of the rest of the statute is more to look at a progressive discipline structure that, you know, I don't know, maybe it's the same as the criminal justice system, you know, when you look at progressive discipline. But when we get to the really significant infractions, then it's extremely clear that in a school setting, we would remove those particular students. So depends on who you talk to. But this thing, every year it comes up, every year there are proposals to either strengthen it or change it, modify it, lessen it, depending on your point of view.
Thank you.
And that's why I think it is so a little bit convoluted when you read this thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else? I need a motion.
I'll move that we send it. We send it to the full, J D E, to the full board.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Daisart, and a second by Ms. Lemoyne. Further questions? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Ms. Snyder, thank you for all your help.
No, thank you.
The keeper of the policies, Ms. Snyder.
Okay, thank you, Mr. England. Next item on the agenda, or the, did I miss one?
No, no, I just wanted to say something, you know.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
No, for the next board meeting, I don't know if we're going to need a motion, whatever, but for Nunez College, the chancellor, Ms. Tina Tenny, would like to come address the board for making a presentation. So sometimes you need a motion, you know, to, to put it to the full board, to put it on the agenda, you know, so we can have that, if we could have that vote to have her on the agenda, please.
You want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, make that a motion, yeah.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. England. Is there a second?
No.
Second by Ms. Lemoyne. Okay, any discussion? Okay. There's a motion on the floor and a second to have a request to appear by Dr. Tenny. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart.
Thank you, Mr. England. Next item, or superintendent's recommendations.
Well, actually, just a couple of comments. We, I think, had a very smooth opening of school, especially in the face of what is happening, not only here in Louisiana, but across the nation. Again, our teachers are stepping up incredibly to do a magnificent job in educating our students in very adverse conditions. So so far, we've had students back for three days. I think things are going very well at this point, and we hope that they will continue to do well. At the, at the actual meeting in two weeks, I'll do an update of some enrollment numbers once we get those settled, and I'll bring you what we have at that particular point. And I would like to mention Saturday is the Chalmers High Alumni Association Golf Tournament at Oak Harbor. I think it's going to be a wonderful event again. We're going to miss Mr. Granberry's presence there, because he's one of the prime movers behind the creation of that particular event. But I know that the alumni group at Chalmers High School was gung ho. David Fernandez, who's one, is also an officer of that group, is the treasurer, and he's been working a lot on getting it ready, and so has the staff at Chalmers High. So want to thank that group for continuing to put the students at our high school first and to do all the fundraising. They do a really nice job with the Alumni Association, raising money, contributing to the school, not only financially with resources, but their time and efforts. So want to thank you to that alumni group as well. And just another plug, and there are alumni from all of our high schools, our past high schools, Andrew Jackson, Borogard, St. Bernard High, also as members of the Alumni Association as well. So we are trying, we try to pull in everyone who has attended our schools. And we also have a membership, and the membership is only $10 a year, and we call it an ABC membership, which is alumni by choice. So even if you did not attend one of our public high schools here in St. Bernard Parish, you can join the Alumni Association to help all of our students and be an ABC member and alumni by choice.
Thank you, Ms. Bocey. Mr. England?
Ms. Bocey, with about the football season this year, with the stadium, with the virus going around right now?
Oh, with the virus? Well, we're moving forward. We are adhering to the guidelines with the LHSAA and with the Department of Health. We know that there are going to be situations in the year where we will have some of our players and possibly adults testing positive for COVID. We will go through all of the protocols, and at this point, we intend to proceed with all of our sports programs this summer, unless we get in a situation that makes it impossible. So as of right now, the volleyball team, the football team, all of the fall sports teams are gearing up at both our high school and middle school levels, and we're proceeding at this point.
Jamboree, the jamboree is August 27?
Yeah.
27.
It's a few weeks away. It's a week, so I ain't.
Hoping.
Hoping.
Hoping everything is okay at that time, and we'll be able to field the team and have a game. So whatever the situation is at that time, we'll follow whatever protocols will be in place at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for some Friday Night Lights, huh?
I hope so. I hope so.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
I was just going to ask swim team as well. Be against swim teams.
Mm-hmm. As, we're going to proceed, and until we're told we can't, or the situation is such that we cannot do so. But we're going to give it a try and hope for the best, and that's why if people can, I know it's a situation, everybody has their private choices, but if you can get vaccinated, stay masked, socially distanced, do whatever we can to prevent the spread, it's going to give our kids an opportunity to learn in person in school and participate in as many extracurricular activities as we can possibly hold. So whatever your feelings are, we can all put it aside and think what's best for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Bocey. And on behalf of the entire board, we want to wish everybody a happy, healthy, safe, educationally productive school year. And we want to thank our administration, our teachers, all of our staff members, our parents, and our students for making it such a smooth opening. So we, we thank you, and kudos go out to all, everybody, all of our staff members and, you know, and teachers. Great job. So, Ms. Lemoyne?
And I wanted to mention, you know, tonight, we talked about, in Ms. Lametta's presentation, about our dual enrollment partnership with Nunez Community College. And just for the public's knowledge, I wanted to remind everyone that classes begin at Nunez this Monday, August the 16th. We've got registration onsite and online happening right now, so there's still plenty of time to register for classes that begin on Monday, August the 16th.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoyne. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second? Second about Mr. Egan. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.